Do that if you could, that would be fantastic. Another thing is, interims are coming out, so just everybody keep their eyes out for those. Every Saturday until like the next month, we're preparing for SOL. So if your student is a student of Osborne and they're taking a history, an English, or a math SOL, and I don't know if they're science, but there is something going on Saturday morning from nine to 12. I know that I myself, I'm going to study for my algebra SOL on Saturday. And also, SOLs are starting next week, so if your student has an SOL, make sure they're eating good breakfasts and they're prepared. And that is all, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Torres?
Yeah, so, I just want to shout, give a shout out to all the leaders out there that we recognize, like, I think it's great that they're like getting involved so early and like, starting on those skills and, yeah, keep doing what you're doing. On Thursday, there's a rock concert by like band, a jazz band, and, no, I think guitar. Yeah. My brother's in it, so I hear him practicing. Sounds good, so, check it out. Friday, there's a multicultural night at Osborne, I think at seven, do you know? I don't know. But, six, eight? Yep. Sounds really cool, and I see them promoting it everywhere, and I know the people that are like putting it together, and they're really awesome, so, I know it's gonna be really, gonna turn out really well. This week, last week, and then the next couple of weeks are like our testing homes, so finish strong. Yeah, it's tough. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Keefer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to congratulate everyone who's been honored tonight. We all applaud your hard work and commitment. Just a couple of updates, and Mr. Williams touched upon a couple of them. The GT Advisory Committee, I was also able to attend. And I just wanted to say, not only is that a great local plan, but I know there are other advisory committees that are working on plans that have come before us as well. So I wanted to acknowledge our Special Ed Advisory Committee, our Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee, as well as others who've put in such hard work for good local plans to give us some guidance. I too was at the academic committee meeting, and I think we got a lot of good work done, so we'll see what the community thinks, and go from there. I also wanted to say Teacher Appreciation Week was wonderful. The PTOs, the PTAs, the PTSA, and Manassas City Public Schools go above and beyond in everything that they do. I know the staff and the teachers were spoiled all week. I've had the privilege of working side by side with many of the people involved with these organizations, so I can vouch for the hard work that goes into them. One event I was able to actually go and help out with was something that had been suggested by a greeter at a school. She thought that the community needed to come together, and in addition to it being Teachers Week, decided that a good idea would be to have pancakes for parents. So, parents came, the students were there, the faculty was there, the staff. And it was so, well, it was somewhat daunting to look up from serving orange juice to see that actually over 400 people had shown up, and we weren't quite sure if we were prepared, but it went off without a hitch, and it reminded all of us as we stood there and took pictures about what it should be about. It was nice to see people relaxing together, you know, put the test aside for just 30 minutes, have breakfast together and talk. So watching the families and the staff mingle was really something to see. So if you haven't seen the pictures, take a look on Facebook, because it was pretty awesome. For those who know me, they realize that I often quote Fred Rogers. And so when I saw these children up here tonight, I thought about one quote that Fred Rogers said, so I wanted to kind of start with that, and say, "When I was a boy, I would see scary things in the news. My mother would say to me, 'Look for the helpers. You will always find people who are helping.'" The reason I chose to share this quote with you was because we have so many helpers around us in our daily lives, and we often forget to recognize them. First tonight, these children, these students, these leaders that are just forming before our eyes, it's just, there's something to be said for that. They're in their schools, they're leading, they're thinking of ideas to help the community, and we've just got to keep nurturing that and see that leadership grow. As I mentioned, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. If teachers aren't among the biggest helpers of them all, then who is? As to our community helpers, first responders, as we celebrate and reflect upon their service and sacrifices, May is National Military Appreciation Month. To our military, thank you for being on the front lines to fight for our freedom and the time you sacrificed, being away from your families and doing so. On May 4th, we celebrated our firefighters for Firefighters Day. To Chief Bowman and his fire and rescue family, thank you for always being on call for us. This week is National Nurses Week. To our school nurses, all nurses, and our very own Pam Sibeski, thank you for always making us feel better, especially when you see us at our worst. Next week is National Police Week, which honors those who've made the ultimate sacrifice to protect us. To our school resource officers, Chief Keen, and our Manassas City Police Department, thank you for being there for us in any situation. I'd be remiss if I didn't give a shout out to my husband, who is in the audience tonight, for his and his colleagues' service to Prince William County PD, as he rolls his eyes at me. I'm proud of who you are and what you do. We recognize many leaders today, and we should continue to strive to grow them in our schools and our larger community. To all of those leaders and helpers in our community, I close by saying, "All the best heroes are ordinary people who make themselves extraordinary." Thank you for all you do and for being extraordinary. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Purdy?
Okay, so I do want to echo some of Mrs. Keefer's comments, and interestingly enough, leadership has been on my mind, so it was good to see what the kids are doing, and it really, really is important that our personnel in our schools are trying to help our kids become the future leaders that we need them to be, so I want to thank them for that. And I'm really glad that we took the time to recognize the support that we do get from the community, because that's what helps make the schools vital. And I also want to talk about something that has been on my mind for a very, very, very long time. One of the most profound statements ever recorded is "Congress shall make no law abridging the freedom of speech." This is the protection provided through the First Amendment in the United States of the Constitution. We all know that. The Fourteenth Amendment applies the same restraint to the state and local government, which includes public school systems. For nearly four years now, I have witnessed this board and superintendent exceed those restraints in both policy and behavior. I myself have been on the receiving end of such behavior. What troubles me most, however, is not the effect such behavior has had on me, but the impact on parents and residents of our city. Such behaviors have resulted in parents and residents fearing to speak out in public. It is alarming to me, over the years, how many people, residents and parents, have told me they fear being labeled a school hater, they fear a campaign to discredit them, and most chilling of all, they fear reprisals against their child if they say something negative. Let me tell you about a letter that was dated April 15th, 2016, written by Mark Herring, Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Virginia. The subject is "School Boards Restricting the Speech of Speakers at Public Meetings." The letter reminds the leader, and this is a quote, "When a school board holds open sessions of its meetings and is addressed by members of the public, it is not functioning as an employer, but as a legislative body. One aspect of the body's function is to listen to the public testimony, including criticisms of those persons implementing the policies. The maintenance of the opportunity for free discussion to the end that government may be responsive to the will of the people. An opportunity essential to the security of the republic is a fundamental principle of our constitutional system. The school district's interest in employee privacy must give way to the more fundamental constitutional right of freedom of expression. Debate over public issues, including the qualifications and performance of public officials, lies at the heart of the First Amendment." To address questions that I have heard over and over and over again from so many of you over the last four years, let me tell you unequivocally, this board does not work for the superintendent, the central office does not work for the superintendent, the principals, administrators, teachers, and support personnel in the schools do not work for the superintendent. We are all, every single one of us, public servants who work for the public. There is a reporting chain to ensure accountability, but there is only one genuine focus for all that we do, and that is the education of your child. You have every right, as parents and citizens, to tell us what you think we are doing well, and to tell us what you think we need to correct. None of us up here knows better than you what is working for your child and what is not working for your child. As far as I am concerned, the minimizing of problems and issues needs to stop. It has happened. Many of you have contacted me and talked to me about it for four years now, nearly four years. Controlling the message needs to stop. Attorney General Herring's letter is a long overdue and welcome reminder of how things should be in our city. He confirms the old adage that sunlight is the best disinfectant. He concludes rightly that freedom of speech is essential to the maintenance of a free society. Blanket prohibitions against speech on specified personnel or student concerns and speech identifying school officials or employees may not be constitutionally applied. In other words, school boards in Virginia may not bar speakers from discussing school employees or officials during open meetings. You pay school board members a $6,000 salary to ensure transparency and accountability in our school systems. You pay six-figure salaries to Manassas City Public Servants to act with transparency and be accountable to you. You trust us to teach your children to respect and encourage freedom of speech and to repudiate attempts to suppress it, a concept that is absolutely fundamentally central to critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. We talked about leadership, and I will tell you, there's a young man, a young leader in our high school, Andrew, who understands his job as a public educator in a profoundly powerful way, that of professional role model. I'm exceedingly grateful and appreciative of what Andrew and so many, many dedicated personnel, you saw examples of that tonight, are doing to provide your children many, many, many wonderful examples of leadership and the kind of education that they so desperately need. By contrast, I too often see how the public trust is eagerly and egregiously broken. I see how years of something positive for your children can be so quickly damaged because we are not modeling critical thinking, effective communication, and collaboration. I have seen too many instances of my way or the highway, lack of ownership of responsibilities, blaming others, and attempts to diminish and distract the focus away from very real issues that have been brought to our attention. Albert Einstein once said, "Never do anything against conscience, even if the state demands it." Ladies and gentlemen, I have been a public servant in my day job for over a quarter century. I find the culture of leadership, integrity, and ethics promulgated by the superintendent and board do not rise to the level which I have been accustomed to. Therefore, I find I can no longer in good conscience serve in this institution. Tonight, I am tendering my resignation, which will go into effect July 1st, 2016. I will serve out the remainder of the four-year obligation for which I was originally elected, but I decline to continue to serve beyond that. I thank you, the public, for placing your trust in me and according me an opportunity to serve. I profoundly regret that I have been unable to be as effective as you deserve. My wish is that at some point in the future, the needed changes will take place so that children and personnel in Manassas City Public Schools are empowered to learn, work, and flourish in an environment in which integrity is the firmest foundation. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Wasn't expecting that, and I have to honestly say that I am sorry that you will be leaving us early. I really am. Onto my comments. First, thanks to all the spouses here tonight. I know that your spouses put in lots of time, and it's not easy for you all being at home, you know, us being up here and doing the things we do, so thank you all for being here and to support us and your spouses. Thanks to all the teachers here tonight. I see one of the lacrosse coaches back there, who I don't usually see, other teachers and principals here tonight. If you don't know, these are long days for teachers especially. I mean, they get to school early in the morning, and administrators, and I know we all have jobs, but they do that, and they come here to our meetings, and, you know, we should recognize that, because that's something that takes time and energy, and for people who think teachers and administrators just work, you know, a few hours during school, it's not true. So thank you all for being here tonight. Now, some of you may have to be here tonight to Dr. McGorick, but thanks for coming anyway. My comments. Thanks to all the children who spoke tonight. I really appreciated the leaders in our schools, and it's great that we're teaching them leadership at this age. I spoke to Rhonda Brown's class in Leadership at Metz with my wife on Friday, and we had a ball, my wife and I, tag teaming it. We don't usually get to do that, but the kids were insightful, they appreciated our comments, I believe, and we learned a lot from them. And Ms. Brown's doing a wonderful job at Metz, and so are the other teachers there, teaching them about leadership and things they need to know as they go forward. So thank you, Ms. Brown, for inviting us, and Ms. Buckhite, seven as well, so thank you for having us do that, we appreciate that. Ms. Wingfield held and conducted a support employee ceremony last week. Ms. Katrina Ward was the overall winner, but there are other support employees recognized, so they really appreciated us having a night to celebrate them, and I thank all of them, and I'm not thinking of them here tonight, but thank them for the work they do in our community. Last night, I also attended the Teacher of the Year Ceremony we had. Mr. Osborne at Hayden was the overall winner, the other nominees at other schools who were awarded Teacher of the Year for their schools, and they all do great things, so I thank them for their work. And Ms. Wingfield, thank you for organizing that, because we recognize our staff when we can, but as much as we can do it, especially those who go above and beyond, it's great to really let them know that we appreciate what they do, so thank them all for that. I attended the after-prom at the Freedom Center. I'm still catching up on my sleep from that, I think I was there till like 3:30 in the morning. For those of you who haven't been, after-prom ends at around 11 o'clock. We have an after-prom. Mr. Hawkins was there as well. I think you left early, you left at two. Yeah, so, but thanks for hanging out. Ms. Sibeski was there, and the students really enjoyed having the Freedom Center. It's great to have someplace the kids can go in a safe environment. There are also tons of volunteers. One thing that really touched me was Jill Spall, who organized the volunteers. She sent out a call saying we didn't have enough volunteers. And not only did more parents volunteer, but there were a number of Osborne staff who volunteered and stayed till 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 in the morning to hang out with our kids and make it a safe environment. And no one would know that, but, I mean, how special is that, that people would give up their time? They weren't getting paid for this, they did it on their own accord. So that was really special. I wish I had all their names, there were too many to mention, but thank them all for showing up, I really appreciate it. Ms. Bennett was there also, so thank her for showing up to that. And I heard the prom went off really well. I see Ms. Rappert over there. I like to call her up, because I think she graduated on Saturday with her master's degree, so congratulations for that. I count it for all families, and when one accomplishes something, I'll, you know, contact her, so, you know, we all should, you know, get a pat in the back for that, but congratulations. And Faith, I'm with the Bar Street Children's Squad again for next year, so congratulations, Faith. Good job. We're in the midst of National Nurses Week, and I hear this every day, because I work with my wife's practice. One thing my wife does, which she didn't want me to tell, but I'll tell anyway, when she has to give children shots, she never does it, she has the nurses do it. So nurses do like what they do well, and do the dirty work also, so thank them for all that stuff, and sorry, honey, I let you butt it out of the bag, because they love Dr. Williams, she's awesome, she's awesome, but the nurse comes and like, "Oh no, she gives me shots," so, thank you. And thank Ms. Sibeski also, our nurse on the panel, for what you do. Nurses are really special, and we appreciate that. Finally, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and the President had a proclamation last month, and I'm going to read part of it really quickly. Part of it states, "Nearly 44 million American adults and millions of children experience mental health conditions each year, including depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, and post-traumatic stress. Although we have made progress expanding mental health coverage and elevating the conversation about mental health, too many people still do not get the help they need. Our nation is founded on the belief that we must look out for one another, and whether it affects our family members, friends, coworkers, students, or those unknown to us, we do a service for each other when we reach out and help those struggling with mental health issues. This month, we renew our commitment to ridening our society of the stigma associated with mental illness, encourage those living with mental health conditions to get the help they need, and reaffirm our pledge to ensure those who need help have access to the support, acceptance, and resources they deserve." We see in my wife's office a vast increase in children with mental health issues, and I know this is going over into the schools. I'm on a committee at University of Virginia, still, where I talked to the President a couple of months, no, a month and a half ago, President Sullivan, and she was saying that one of the big issues they deal with at UVA, and a lot of schools are dealing with, is children who come there with mental health issues. This is a more serious problem. I'm not sure if it's more serious because we're recognizing it more, there are more issues, but it's something we really need to be attuned to, so really be sensitive to that and recognize that if someone's having an issue, there is help for them, and we do a great job when our schools are trying to address it, but something that we can't forget, that affects people no matter your age, color, race, creed, so it crosses all boundaries. And then I'll conclude with saying, again, to Ms. Purdy, I appreciate your integrity, and I am sad that you are leaving us, but thank you for what you've done, and I know you'll be here longer, but thank you. And that's it.
Thanks, Chair. Ms. Sibeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would also like to say thank you for your service, Ellen. Everyone plays a unique role on this board, and your input has been very valuable, especially, I know for me, serving on the policy committee, your inputs have been very helpful. So I wish you the best as you continue in other endeavors, but do thank you for your service here. I would like to congratulate all of our graduating seniors. By now, you've had to make your decisions on what you're going to be doing after you leave Osborne in June. Those students that have decided the colleges they'll be attending, and/or jobs they'll be seeking and taking on, I hope you've been prepared well, and I know you'll be very successful and productive members of our community, so congratulations. I would like to also thank Ms. Wingfield for the events of the last week and a half for our staff. I really enjoyed attending last week our support staff recognition ceremony. It's just amazing, you know every day great things are going on, but when you hear at these events, the support staff celebration last week, and the Teacher of the Year celebration last night, the great things that our staff does, not only every day in our classrooms, but in the great, our community and the greater community, they don't serve just the students and their peers every day, they reach out beyond that, and that says a lot about the quality of the people that we have here, and I recognize that, and I thank you for that service, again, not just to Manassas City Public Schools, but to the greater community of which you participate and serve. I want to thank everyone that made the after-prom such a success. I know they have more students attend this year than we did in the last year or two. It's a great event for our students, many more stayed till the end this time, and it just was, there's such a great group of kids. Mr. Williams said, "You do walk around half-dazed yourself as a parent," but, because the kids can stay up much later somehow than what you can, but just the respect and the energy and the conversations, it's just a great, a great night and a great experience, and I'm glad that we have such great volunteers and businesses that helped that event happen, because if we didn't have involved people in our schools and our community, that event is not something that could happen. So, as I end, you know, I want to thank all of our public servants, because essentially, as you hear, you know, firefighters, police officers, nurses, it really is about public servants. All of us serve the public in maybe a different, unique ways, but we all do it together because we all want a great place to live and a great place to have our families. So I think everyone, that every day, gives back by being a public servant. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Bushnell?
Thank you, sir. Ma'am.
Got it.
Okay. Ms. Purdy, thank you for your, for your service, and I would just like to point out that in your four years on this board, I don't think there's a single time that you did not put the interests of the students first, and that is a very important standard to live by. I believe that your ethics are strong, but I believe your heart is even stronger, and I believe that you have been a voice for students, and I think that's an important voice, so thank you for that. I believe that, this is the second board meeting in a row that we've had the honor of being able to recognize non-academic achievements by some of our wonderful, wonderful students, and it somehow makes life even fuller, when you see, yes, we have wonderful accomplishments in the classroom, but look at all of the development that's taking place for each of these students as they grow into young men and women. And how wonderful was it tonight to be able to honor young leaders who were taking it upon themselves to learn to be leaders, to be leaders, and in several cases, one of the reasons that they wanted to tackle this was to get over their fear of public speaking, and here we make them talk on television to a roomful of strangers. It's just amazing that they all did so well in presenting themselves to us, and, you know, as a, when I was a kid, I moved around a lot, how wonderful would it have been to have a new friend in every school? I mean, that was, what a wonderful idea, right? And that's one of the great things about what happens in a school division of this size, is that at each school, they can, they can try something new, they can, they can do very well with that something new, and then we can learn from it and find ways to adapt it to the rest of the school system. So it just makes my heart sing to see the kinds of kids that we have coming up in our schools, and to thank you, the staff, for helping provide them with those leadership opportunities. And there is just something special about when you stand up here, and you turn around, and you say the Pledge of Allegiance, to hear all of those young, enthusiastic, believing voices behind you, it's the fullest that your heart and spirit can get. So thank you for tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've kind of had a focus on leadership, so I'll see if I can lead by example, be short and succinct, and get this going. Let me start with a thank you, though, sincerely to Mrs. Purdy for her service, and I'd echo my peers who spoke. It's been a sincere pleasure personally to serve with you. Your integrity, your ethics, your student focus has clearly resonated, and I do believe you have made a difference with your service, so thank you. To the young leaders and to our staff, what I loved about what we saw, and sometimes it takes losing a lot of hair and the hair you have turning white to learn this lesson, and they already know this, is leadership is more than just being at the top box on a piece of paper and telling people what to do. It's leading by example. It's servant leadership. It's serving as a role model. It's doing the things we heard those young students talking about, and it's a lifelong lesson that I'm glad we're teaching the youth of today, so. With that, sir, my comments are finished.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say how proud I am of this board and of the system for our openness. For the past 10 years, people have come to me and to other people on this board appreciative how approachable we are. I believe we listen. I'm sorry if there's people out there that feel that we are tyrants up here. I surely do my very best not to give that impression myself, and I don't feel that of anybody else on this board. So if you're worried about coming to talk to us, don't. And if you're too afraid to come up here, call me, call anybody on this board, our numbers are on the website, our emails are on the website. Ms. Purdy, thank you for your service, but I have to disagree with you on Mr. Herring's ruling. I have no problem with the First Amendment. What I have a problem with is a government being on television and allowing someone to come, and on, and us being complicit with them trashing our employees or our students. And then we broadcast it, then we put it on YouTube, and once that bell is rung, it's out there. So Mr. Herring decided that you can talk about anything you want up here. I've always said, "If you want to talk about me, that's fine," and we're going to have to allow anybody to talk about anything they want, but I ask people to be respectful of our students and of our staff and of their privacy. I've had people come speak to us over the last 10 years, and I'm 100% certain, not every one of them are correct nor truthful. And for us to have to broadcast that and put that on YouTube for the whole world to see, that then becomes fact, and it's not always fact, and Mr. Herring, I believe you were wrong. And Mr. Herring, I believe you were wrong. Leadership. These kids are wonderful. It, it's the best thing about coming to school board meetings, is having our kids come before us. I've also got another friend who's a great leader. She owns a side farm just down the street from us. When she retired, we started renting her farm. She is at Katon Merchant House tonight, and Mrs. Mock, if you're watching, have a great night. Thank you for everything you've done, and the leadership you've shown your industry. Thank you very much. And we'll move on to citizens' comment. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have been, you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. I have one person signed up, Mr. Riley. And, Mr. Riley, when you come up, could you please give your name and your address, and then take the sheet, and put your address on that for me? Because otherwise, we might not get it right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Distinguished members of the board, Dr. McGork. I will say that I'm very encouraged by what I saw tonight, in terms of our, our young leadership, having, being a 10-year employee of the Manassas City Public Schools. So, it's, it's very encouraging. But I'd like to talk tonight about the schedule at METS for the school year 2016-2017. We come before you this evening, with all due respect, as a unified body, to voice our concerns over the rejection of the proposed schedule for METS for the school year 2016-2017. We do this responsibly, respectfully, with a righteous indignation born of our experience, knowledge, and collective disappointment that we have not made the necessary progress over the last several years. In addition, our concerns are supported by research-based studies performed by such groups as the National Middle School Association, with their position paper called "This We Believe," the Johns Hopkins School of Education, and the Hanover Research Council, to name but a few. The larger majority, the silent majority, willingly and enthusiastically embraces the vision and direction of our new administration, in particular, as it regards the schedule. And we feel obligated, duty-bound, for the sake of our students, to voice the specific reasons for our concern. First, keeping the schedule the same eliminates the opportunity for the widely popular and highly anticipated Power Hour. This was a period in which teachers could effectively utilize the time allotted to obtain a midday temperature gauge of their assigned students, advise them accordingly, and build an all-important relationship with students based on mutual trust and respect developed during these sessions. Secondly, the A/B schedule for social studies and science reduces opportunities to reinforce reading, writing, and literacy skills within these content areas, and upsets the continuum of learning, particularly in terms of covering the extensive material required by state-mandated standards of learning. Next, the teaming strategy and academy-based instruction, teams of teachers planning and working together collaboratively with the same group of students, was designed to further enhance relationship-building with the students. With a common vision and goal centered on each academy's mission, we were confident that focused learning fostered by healthy competition would become the standard. However, with the old schedule, we would be forced to have students in math and English overlap teams in academies, thereby minimizing the impact of building collegiality. As a final note, the rumors swirling around this development were varied and disconcerting. Perhaps the most powerful version was that key decision-makers also embraced the changes, but felt a new schedule was too much too soon. If that is the case, then we are indeed encouraged. However, we, the teachers and staff at METS, have responded to several significant initiatives over the past several years with less than the consensus that we have demonstrated for this new plan. As such, we are confident in our ability to effectively enact all the changes as soon as possible, and respectfully request the superintendent and school board consider supporting this effort for the 2017-2018 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Coach, I wouldn't unlead your address. I've been asked for it. I'm just doing what I'm told. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Chris? Chris, and when you, can you grab the paper from Coach and sign in? Thank you.
So, I didn't actually-
Name the address, Chris.
Christopher Ryan Purdy, and do you mean my home address here? Yeah, 9263 Southern Lake Boulevard, Manassas, Virginia.
Thank you.
And, no, I didn't actually plan on speaking tonight, but I did want to, you know, I'm completely unprepared, which is not something, if you know me, is not something I like to do. But I did want to, just brief statement, or statements. And, and for those who don't know, probably many of you, especially on camera, I'm a recent graduate of Osborne High School. You know, I attended all four years there. Graduated summa cum laude. And, you know, I just finished my freshman year of college, and we all know all of the experiences and whatnot that have come with that. But one thing that, especially that I've seen as, you know, reflecting, is that we can always do better. And, it doesn't matter what it is, and it's in your personal life, it's in your professional life, if it's, excuse me, in your professional life, or if it's, and, you know, in your extracurricular activities, whether that be public service, or sports, coaching, it doesn't matter, we can always do better. And, I challenge everyone watching that, or to keep that in mind, and make that a goal. And, part of what comes with that is understanding that we don't have all the answers. As an individual, and even as a group, you don't have all the answers, you don't know every viewpoint. And I think a powerful tool is accepting criticism. And, that's something I've definitely learned a lot over this, over this past year. I joined a, or attempted to, and started the process of joining a rescue squad down at Virginia Tech, and I was, didn't, wasn't able to finish the process. It was anywhere from 25 to 35 hours a week, on top of being a full-time college student. So, as you can imagine, it was difficult. And, one of the criticisms that I received was that I did not take criticism well, actually, ironically. And, so, one of the things I learned from that experience was that we can always do better, and that take, accepting criticism is something that allows us to do that. And, so, I just challenge everyone watching to keep that goal in mind, that you can be the best out there, but it doesn't mean you can't improve. And, there are many ways to allow you to improve, and one of those ways is accepting criticism and understanding that, you know, we don't have all the answers. It doesn't matter whether it's you, whether you're the federal government, no one has all the answers. And, all we can do is the best that we can. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you so much for having my time.
Now, Chris, we're, we're not supposed to, Chris?
Oh, sorry.
We're not supposed to respond to, but it, it, it's always incredible to hear our graduates talk so eloquently about life and their journey. So, thank you.
Thank you. He's been here 26 years, he can do whatever he wants. Can you sign in over there for me, Chris?
Mr. Riley? If you have a copy of your comments, could you share them with the clerk, so she could share them with us? Thank you.
Anyone else? Good, because it says time's up. We're going to move on to the action agenda, the 2016-2017 Student Code of Conduct. Do you want to do the consent agenda, sir? Sure. Do you want to do the consent agenda? I was going to skip over it, but that's okay.
If you don't mind, I'd like to make a motion, sir, that we adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, a second by Mr. Bushnell, to accept the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, 7-0. All right, now, as long as you wanted to do that, now we'll move on to the discussion agenda, anyway. The school calendar, I was way off. Mr. Lyon?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Chairman of the Board, fellow distinguished board members. Let me get my bearings here.
Mr. Lyon, can you hold on just one minute? And I'll, I'll get you where you need to be.
She's better than, she's better than Siri.
There you go.
Well, me, too.
Okay.
Do you want me to drive?
Well, I, I can drive. I just need, okay, I just need to know which tab which. Okay. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I am here to present two proposed calendars for the school years 2017-2018. As you see on the screen, we did do a survey of staff. We had almost a 50, well, basically a 50% response rate on our survey for the proposed version A calendar. Of that survey, you'll see, the majority of the respondents either said yes or indifferent with a prior, school starting prior to Labor Day. And, the second item there, if they agreed with the designated parent-teacher conferences, most of them agreed yes, and 27% were indifferent, and 15% said no. Next item, did you agree with teacher workdays after each grading period? And that was astounding, yes. And the last item, do you, how do you feel about the 2017-2018 calendar? Majority of the people, 27% said they liked it, 15% were indifferent, and then 14% said they did not. We took this response and, and comments from the staff, and we proposed two different versions tonight. So, let's look at version A. Before I look at version A, one thing I wanted to break down were the number of days and how things break out in the calendar. A lot of the comments we get back are, if we're starting sooner, why don't we end sooner? And so, I took a look at the calendar, and said, well, between August 17th and June 14th of 17-18 school year, there are 216 days to work with. Of those 216 days, we have to account for our professional development day, and teacher workdays, and then our holidays. So, when you add up all those days that we take out, non-instructional days and holidays, that's 36 days, and that leaves us 180. So, I try to simplify it for people when they look at the calendar and ask that question, if we start sooner, why can't we end sooner? And that's why, because of our holidays and, and the teachers' contractual days to make it work. So, looking at version A, and I'll bring that up. Looking at version A, some of the features of, of calendar version A here are, teachers, the new teachers would respond on August 11th, and returning teachers would, would return on August 17th. The parent-teacher conferences, and this, and this was the original version that the staff responded to. You'll see parent, parent-teacher conferences in October and February are early release days. We also have non-instructional days, we have the two flex days for teachers, starting in, on August 11th, and running through August 16th. Then we have seven assigned days prior to the school year starting, for the pre-service week. We have two professional development days during the school year, November and January. We have four teacher workdays during the school year, at, one at the end of each quarter. In version A, the last day for students would be the 13th, and the last day for the teachers would be the 14th. Looking at version, another thing I wanted to show you real quick, on the second page of this, it breaks down the number of days for teachers, students, and 12-month employees. As you can see, everything's accounted for. We have 195 teacher days, 180 student days. For 12-month employees, we have 247 and 13 division closed days. And then you see the quarter amounts there. Looking at version B, the features of version B, and the holidays are the same in each version. Looking at version B, this is where, you know, we have comments back from teachers asking for a full day for parent-teacher conferences, and discussing with the principals, they suggested to do it in October. So, the difference, the first difference you'll see here, adding that full student holiday in October for a parent-teacher conference day, it changed the reporting, or the reporting, first reporting days in August for new teachers and returning teachers. They backed that up today, because now I had to account for an instructional day that I put at the end of the year. So, in version B, the school year is one day longer than version A. And you'll see there, we have two flex days and six assigned days before school starts. We have two professional days in November and January, and the four teacher workdays at the end of each quarter. We also, the students would go to the 14th in this version, and the teachers would go to the 15th. And that is the presentation, the two proposed versions for tonight. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, sir. It's a lot to look over, I don't know how much we've looked over it yet. Are there any questions or comments, sir?
Go ahead, Mr. Williams. I'm, first, thank you, Mr. Lyon, for your presentation. We had a decent amount of discussion about the calendar last week, and there are a couple things I want to point out. One, as the chairman of the committee, I recommend that we come up with, and my committee members, co-committee members, Ms. Keith and Ms. Zbyski, agreed with two calendars. Because one thing I want us to always be cognizant of is that we should take into account all stakeholders. And I've heard enough from parents and teachers over the years that when we have two parent-teacher conference days, it's harder on the teachers in terms of the time length. And additionally, parents would, some parents would rather have an all-day conference, where they can come from the morning through the night, as opposed to only coming from, let's say, 12 to 7:00 or 1:00 to 7:00. Some people come in the morning. So, having one day may be more beneficial than two. So, I thought that having two options, we could look at both, kind of decide which one was better, and then go from there. Something else that does not mention, and it's not in this calendar, but I thought I'd bring it out, because I mentioned it at the academic committee. For our Easter break, we always have Easter break before Easter, and come back the day after Easter. Looking at the calendars going forward, sometimes if we have the Easter break fall early, we have maybe a few weeks before Easter break after January, and then we have a long period after. And in the future, it may be better for parents, students, teachers to have Easter break fall a week later. Nothing to look at right now, but-
Calm down.
No, but everybody know, I don't want anybody to get upset. But, what I want us to get into the habit of doing is, as we think about being a proactive school system, doing the best for all of our students and our families, that we think about other options. So, it's not an option at all, so, anyone listening, not an option for this year or next school year, but it's something that I thought of in this process, that I always want us to be proactive and not fall into the habit, or, or trap of going the same old, same old, because we always did it that way. That said, the staff did a wonderful job of listening to students, teachers, and parents, and trying to come up with the best calendar we have. I don't think we have a preference over Airbnb, I don't have a preference either way, but I thought we should have those options, so we could look at it and decide which one was better. So, thank you for accommodating that. And I don't know if other committee members have any comments to add on to what I, what I said.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, we did have a quite involved conversation about the whole Easter break, whether it's before or after Easter. And, you know, a couple of years ago, we did add in the date after the Sunday holidays, so that people were traveling would have more time, much like we added in the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. So, the input we get from staff, in particular, and parents, when we're putting a calendar together, is very vital, because we do listen to that, and that's how those other changes came about. So, the discussion about, the other, the spring break discussion is something that we do want to be considered, but part of the conversation is also about the fact that we do have many shared services across the division, and especially at the high school, but across the whole division, where our students receive services not in Manassas City Public Schools. So, much like the fact that we start our school year based on when Princeville County can start, so that our students can have instruction done equally at that timeframe, that would play a part in the spring break discussion as well. So, this discussion, the, part of the reason it can't be an immediate change, as we do with some things, is that, with this being a multi-jurisdictional question, it will involve staff having conversations with our, the other jurisdictions that we share services with, because everyone would have to agree to that change in order for us not to have students not ever getting a break, because they'd have to go to school even when we were out, and then vice versa the other week. So, I like the forward-thinking, and we do try to be very proactive and, and forward-thinking in our committees, as well as I believe that this board does, on many, many things. And this is just another example of that. So, as you said, that's why it's definitely not happening this year, definitely not happening the next year, but it's something that we hope to take up in conversations, just to see if it's something that would work for everybody.
Just a quick question, Mr. Lyon. When can parents be expected to see it online? I'm not sure if you said it, but I missed it if you did.
No, actually, that was my closing remarks. Thank you. Yes, I'll be working this right after, get this up tomorrow for public comment. Yes, I'll be working this right after, get this up tomorrow for public comment through the website for the next two weeks, three weeks.
Thank you. I've got a couple things. Well, I kept looking at you, and you wouldn't, you couldn't wave that. I mean, you go ahead.
I just wanted to say, from a student's standpoint, that having the full day off for a teacher, a teacher conferences would be much better, because when you have two half-days, half-days are really hard on learning, because you have shortened classes, and then it's all short and compact, and it's just rushed, and if we had the whole day off, if we had just one whole day off, I think that'd be more productive, because so much more can get done in a full day versus the two half-days. So that's just a student's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Boy, am I glad I called on you. That's good.
The student perspective is always good. Mr. Lyon, great presentation, thank you. And I think, as I understand the data, and I want to echo, by the way, Mrs. Sebesky's comments, that with shared services and regional programs, our mutual cooperation between, between everything we do with our neighbors is, of course, important. Interestingly, with the survey, the thing I thought, two things I thought were most interesting in the staff responses, is one, the thing that was absolutely the plurality and almost unanimous was the full day teacher workday after each grading period. 88 percent is, is a pretty significant recommendation. So certainly, that's the key significant difference between the two, as you pointed out, recognizing Mr. Williams's point, the stakeholders. The other interesting data point that you presented was essentially a 50-50 split, 40-40, 20-20 undecided, between starting before or after Labor Day. Yet, everything we are seeing, and of course, I, you know, for years, I have opposed the King's Dominion bill to have one specific political interest that can change the rules for the states is just wrong. Half the school systems, more than half, don't have to follow the law. I'm curious what drives people's expectations of that. We had a good snow year this year, we're looking at 1718. How long do we think, because we're riding essentially Prince Williams waiver, how long do we think that waiver is good for, and is that even a valid premise for 1718?
So, that's a great question. I spoke to the county, and they have several years of eligibility left in their snow day bank.
Okay. Thank you.
We talked about that before, it was several years.
I want to say five, I think, five years.
I think it's somewhere in the, at least four years out that we would have to worry about.
And we had a good snow year this year.
And the start of this calendar is tied to the start of the county calendar, too.
Right, that's right.
That point wasn't made, but it's an important point.
Yes, it is subject to the counties, and once they get to their 1718 school calendar, you know, we'll be subject to change on what they decide.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
My question was, did you mention something about putting an instructional day at the end of the year in one of the calendars?
No, no, of the instructional day, yes. And version B, it's one day longer for the students than version A.
Gotcha. My one comment would just be, as much as no one wants to hear, and I don't even want to say it, that I would rather start earlier than have an extra instructional day at the end of the year, because right now, it's sad as it is, everyone, everything is taught to the test, everything is taught to the SOL, so after it's over, it's just, it doesn't seem like there's so much instruction going on. So if, if that's how it's going to be, then we should add the extra day to the beginning of the year, because much more will get done, and then we have more time to not just teach to the test, but to explore our options and other subjects. But if we add it to the end, I feel like if we add it to the end of the year, no one wants to be at school by then, minds are wandering, that's when kids don't even go to school. So I just think that the time would be better used at the beginning of the year. That's just a, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. That's a great suggestion. Just so, just so everyone understands, our start date is tied to the county start date.
Got it. I wasn't aware, but, that, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Ms. Purdy?
I got to tell you, you know, that's a perfect example of critical thinking. Every time you say something, you have always made a recommendation backed with a lot of thought, and frankly, insight. And so I really, really want to commend you for that, because every time you ask a question, and then you make a recommendation, there's some real serious, you know, rigorous rationale behind it, and that's a, that's a good role model.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lyon. Mr. Bushnell.
I'd have to, I'd have to also say, this is, this is probably your strongest meeting. I mean, you, you made one great point, and then you came back with another, it was like boom, boom. That's really tough to do. Mr. Albrecht, in looking at the survey information, the thing that strikes me is the large number of indifference. And I know that that must reflect some satisfaction with the work, because our staff has never been shy about telling us when they didn't like calendars in the past. So it's refreshing to see a majority sitting in that indifferent column, which means we must be doing something right with, with all of the options. So thank you for all of your hard work. And you, too.
Okay, now is everybody done? All right, good. We will move on to the student code of conduct. Is that you again, Mr. Lyon?
No.
No. Dr. Stone. With M shoes.
I'm just saying, on Mr. Lyon's shoes.
Yeah, look at him.
Good evening, Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGurk, members of the board. Staff presented the student code of conduct on April 26th, and based on feedback, the student code of conduct presented this evening incorporates a revised statement concerning the use of electronic equipment and communication devices that will be placed in both Section 10 and 15 of the code. The statement will now read, "The use of personal electronic equipment and communication devices such as a cellphone to record and/or post on social media; any violation of student code of conduct is prohibited. This includes audio, video, or still images used to incite any act of violence, to disrupt the educational environment, or communications. These actions are subject to disciplinary action and/or confiscation of the device or equipment until the conclusion of the investigation." The recommendation this evening is that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the student code of conduct as presented this evening for the 1617 school year.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion so we can have discussion. Move the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 2016, 2017 student code of conduct.
Second.
As presented.
As presented, yes.
You okay with as presented?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, discussion. I think we got yours, Ms. Purdy.
Okay. I cannot vote for this. Frankly, it's a flagrant overreach. So my first question is, what was the general counsel's recommendation associated with this statement?
What was what?
General counsel?
Our, our school board attorney?
Yes.
They did not comment on this section at all. It was perfectly fine.
They were asked to comment on the language? Frankly, it bothers me, and I was in the committee, where we, we had a discourse about And we're reaching into areas that we really have no business reaching into. I understand the intent behind it. I think there is language that provides us the tools that we need in order to be able to make our environments and our school systems and our athletic fields and bus stops and buses as safe as they need to be, without being so draconian. Okay? I was okay with the language when we modified it, saying that if information was posted on social media with the intent to incite aggression, or bullying, or disrupt the educational process, that is a very different thing than a blanket prohibition of posting things on social media. I'm, I'm, this, this, the end of this week, I'm not looking forward to the travel that I have to make on behalf of my job. I'm going into the Middle East, and I have never had a good visit anytime I've been there. I've been accosted in the elevator simply for being female. I have had my passport, and my purse, and my backpack, and my luggage confiscated. I've been detained. And this is a regime that has these kinds of policies, that clamps down very, very tightly on what people can say in the public. And that is just not something I can get behind. I understand the intent, and I think the language can say what it needs to say, in terms of, don't post on social media with the intent of inciting aggression, or what have you. But the way I read the language, the way it's written, it sounds to me, it's like, if you take a picture, or if you take a video of a violation of the code, and you put it on social media, we have the ability to bring sanctions against you. We don't own social media. Am I misinterpreting what that statement says?
For, my understanding is, what we were attempting to do is leave the language that you had, so it's the, it's the use of it to, as it says in the next sentence.
Well, so, the way this first sentence reads is very straightforward. You know, to me, it comes across as, no, we are prohibiting when this stuff is put up on social media.
Dr. Stone, this language was put in there by this board, we decided, so I think we should answer your question. I don't know that Dr. Stone is prepared or needs to. The discussion we had at the last meeting, the, Mr. Bushnell brought it up, and I think, I thought everybody agreed that that was the way we wanted to go.
Well, I, I made a clarification, that the request was modified, associated with the intent for putting it on social media. But that's not how the language reads to me now.
Okay. Does anybody else have a problem with the language the way it is now?
Where is it?
Page 12.
Page 12. Oh, is it 12 or 17?
Page 12.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Excuse the sound. You're talking about the spread? Use of personal electronic and communication devices such as a cellphone to record and/or post on social media; any violation of the student code of conduct is prohibited. That's a very, very straightforward statement. If you post something that is recording a violation of the code of conduct, that's It says it includes audio, visual, or still images used to incite. It doesn't say, it's only prohibited if you incite aggression, or bullying, or disruption of. So I'm okay, as long as our intent is, we are making it very clear. It's, it's the moral equivalent, you know, we have freedom of speech, which was one of the big reasons I had the conversation I had during my school board member comments. We need to have the ability to say what needs to be said. Because I got to tell you, when we start to put a suppression on people being able to say what they want to say, what separates us from Iran? What separates us from North Korea? Our whole form of government is about allowing people to say what they feel needs to be said. And you can say it with a photo, you can say it with a video, you can say it with a letter, you can say it with a speech. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I have had, had training, there are certain things that you can put a damper on. You can yell "fire" in a crowded theater if there's really a fire, but you can't if there isn't one. Okay? So that's why the intent is, in my opinion, is very important. The intent is, the violation of the code and conduct is when you are using that speech to incite aggression, and bullying, and disruption of, of the educational process. And so rather than this board, maybe intentionally or unintentionally, choosing to dictate, let's choose to educate. Let's, let's work with our kids, and frankly, let's think about a little bit, I was quite surprised with what my son had to say, but I think we prepare our children a whole lot better if we have a conversation with them that says, social media comes with it responsibility. You need to think critically through what the potential consequences are if you say and do something. And let's, let's prepare our kids to be responsible, and responsive, compassionate, and caring, and considerate, in terms of what they post on social media, rather than us just simply kind of laying down the law and dictating. So I'd like to suggest that, that we, either we return the language back to what I had originally requested, and the prohibition is against posting videos or still pictures that are intended to incite a disruption in the educational process, or aggression. But, but the way that first sentence reads, it comes across to me as just a flat, no-holds-bar, no-holds-bar prohibition.
Mr. Bushnell?
So I, I think it is a flat, no-holds-bar prohibition, and I think that increasingly across this country, we are seeing the use of social media being used to promote and glorify law-breaking incidents in the schools. That repeatedly, there are viral videos that are taken, and many times, the beatings or the injuries that kids suffer in schools across this country, including the recent death of a high school student in Delaware, are happening because people are taking films, encouraging someone to do more on the film than they might do otherwise, so that they can glorify an act of random violence. And I think that's wrong. I think it's, I think it's as bad as shouting "fire" in a crowded theater, maybe even worse, because you are taking advantage of an escalating situation, and you're making someone think that they are a star, and that they're doing something that doesn't carry any, you know, any consequences. And it just seems to me that the person who is filming and sharing that violation, if they're part of the encouragement to cause injury to another person, they are as guilty as the person causing the injury. And that's what I'm trying to get to. It's not anything about the ability to be critical. It has a lot to do with the kid who's sitting there with a cellphone, or any kind of other device, and saying, oh, do this, do this. Hit him again, kick him in the head. That's wrong. That child currently can't be punished, because they're not part of the assault. Yet, they are as much a part of the assault as the person who's hitting them. So that's what I was trying to get at, and that's, that's a major concern in this country, and we have to come to grips with it. We've, we heard it, we've heard it ourselves here. We've heard that kids take films and that they go a step further, because it's on the film.
Mr. Albrecht?
This is a wonderful discussion and debate, because I think we all believe in the Constitution and believe in freedom of speech, and one could interpret this action to say we are restricting speech, which I don't think any of us want to do, but Mr. Bushnell makes an incredibly compelling point. When we say it's okay to do it, unless you have an intent, everyone's going to say, that wasn't my intent, but that's going to be the result and the consequence. And at some point, we have to say, to what the chair just said about showing respect, is part of it is leading by example and setting rules to say, this is the respectful environment of what is acceptable. I mean, we're still dealing with kids, whether we want any other way to look at it, we're not dealing with 20-somethings, or college students, or middle-aged people, we're dealing in many cases with middle-schoolers potentially. So we kind of do need to talk a little bit in a black-and-white environment, so I, I'm inclined to support it the way it is, because it's enforceable. If we leave it to the intent, we have this huge gray murky area that we really will have put a policy in, it's basically toothless.
Anyone else? Ms. Purdy want to say something?
No, but I want to give everybody else a chance, too.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I, I'm really struggling with this, obviously, because I don't see the difference between when our kids go see movies and watch things on television that are depictions of, you know, brutal beatings and shootings, and our kids aren't running around, going out, and doing what they see on television. Okay? Which is why I suggest, now, we are in agreement, the second statement, I'm perfectly fine with. This includes audio, video, or still images used to incite any act of violence, to disrupt the educational process, environment, or communications. I think we do have teeth. When we reinforce teaching, we give words power, we choose how we behave.
We choose how we behave. There is no video out there that is ever going to incentivize me by watching it to pull a trigger and shoot somebody in the head. I choose how I react. I choose how I behave and that's the message we should be teaching our children. Just because you see something on a video or in a picture, that does not give you license to go do it. And it should not be interpreted as incentivization to go do it. That's the distinction here. And that's what I'm trying to get this board to, to, you know, I, I think your hearts are in the right place because what really is the intent behind this is we want to do things that put a stop to the kinds of behaviors that are inappropriate. So, I absolutely and totally in agreement with that. But I think we send absolutely the wrong message by doing it this way with that blanket prohibition. And so, I've said my piece.
Mr. Line?
I'll comment really quickly. Actually, I get what Ms. Purdy's saying and I understand where she's coming from and I would have actually the exact same concern but for one thing. At the very end, we say the actions are subject to disciplinary action, which means that there's a caveat that they may or not be action. And it comes to mind, there have been in the press recently a ton of cases, I mean, too many to talk about and kind of sad, of sexual assault on college campuses that have come to light. And sometimes when things, depictions are shared, those kind of things, especially in a high school environment or any educational environment can cause chaos and incite violence. But there may be instances where by sharing that, a crime is prevented or something is shown or brought to light. So, if something like that were to occur, for example, the person may not be, even though it's prohibited, if we investigated, we may say, you're not going to be disciplined because you did something to save someone's life or to bring someone to justice. So, because we have this caveat here almost in the last statement to me, saying they're subject to disciplinary action, it gives me some comfort. Now, I say that with the thought that if someone did violate the code, we wouldn't universally say, well, nope, you did this, you're out, ten days, a year, whatever. So, as long as there is some justice brought to it, so to speak, which I think we would do that, I'm fine with it. But because the way it's stated, I don't have, I'm fine with the language. I do, I do understand and get where you're coming from, but I think that for me, I'm fine with the language predicated on that final statement from my interpretation.
Ms. Bushnell?
Ms. Purdy, I get where you're coming from too. And for me as a journalist, any, any limitations on speech and dissemination of information are very, very important and sacred to me. But I think the distinction you draw is, is the wrong distinction. This isn't a distinction about going and watching a movie and having that incite me to do something. This is about someone who is an active participant in an assault and carrying a cellphone or filming it. That person in many cases is an active participant, as, as active a participant as the person who's actually doing the striking. In many cases across this country, we've seen that things are planned ahead to be filmed and to, to make something happen. And currently, the person who isn't doing the hitting but is doing the filming, in my mind, they're a part of the assault and we don't have a way to punish them for that right now. And we need something that says, freedom of speech, great, but if you are part of an assault and you're the one who's filming it and putting it on, on social media, you're part of the assault. You're part of it. And, and we need some way to prevent that from happening because that seems to be increasing in this country right now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we've had a good discussion here, but a couple of points. We know that the mind, the brain does not completely develop to age 25. So, we're not talking about adults who are making thought-out, completely thought-out decisions. Kids make mistakes. However, when you make a mistake that can lead to severe consequences of another person, there has to be an accountability. The wording here has to be clear because not all parents and definitely not a lot of our students truly understand the ramifications of some actions. This needs to be worded this way so it's very clear that if they're going to actively participate in something that's causing harm, that there will be some type of consequence for that action. I don't think it's meant to be any more or any less than that. And I think that that's why, when this was discussed before, this was part of the reason for that, this wording. So, unless someone else has something to say, I'd like to call for a vote.
Ms. Madden?
Okay, thank you. I would just like for everyone just to take a second and to think of themselves as a teenager real fast. And when you're a teenager and you're in high school, you care about what everyone thinks. So, if you're sitting there video, recording a fight and people are telling you to keep going and you're punching that person and we're recording it and they're egging you on, of course you are because you care what everyone thinks and it shouldn't be that way. And I shouldn't care what, what Tina says about my dress, but I do. And it shouldn't be that way, but because it is that way, this is something that's really important and they, they, like Ms. Bushnell said, they are an active participant because they are causing issues themselves. They're not punching that person, but by recording it and posting it on social media, they're causing more issues. So, I think that what it says is really important and they, there should be consequences to actions like this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
You were three for three tonight. Incredible.
I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs.
Mr. Marion, I'd like to make a public comment on this.
I'm sorry, sir, we can't right now. Our time for public comment is up. That was it, that was early in the meeting. I'm sorry, John. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Sebeski, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the 2016, 2017 student code of conduct as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carry six, one. We'll move on to the closed session. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, move the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings as allowed by section 2.2, 3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purpose. Section 2.2, 3711, part A, paragraph one, discussion of personnel item PERS 1516-2574.
Second.
Second. Here. Kiefer. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer, that the school board of the city of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by section 2.2-3711, part A, paragraph one of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the following purpose, discussion of personnel matters, PERS 1516-2574. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, zero.